Really bad.
We're recording now, Joe, just so I don't forget to do it.
Yep.
So I'm gonna mute off once this starts to just keep tabs on people. I'll just chime in when you get to my report.
Okay, anybody else with us yet?
Um, I don't see anybody. Keats in.
Yep, all hooked up.
There's Jimmy.
There's Jimmy.
SN's here. Joe's here.
Whoa. Just said lighting.
It's better. Is that better, Keith? Did I look like an angel?
Who? You always do. It looks like I've been, I'm being questioned by sort of police department.
Hey, Jay-Z, how you doing? You got Jay-Z and J N.
We could use a commissioner or two.
What diner is Joe at now? He's usually at Owl's.
So you've got four, it looks like. Yourself.
I see three.
Richard, yeah, you're three. I'm sorry.
Well, three would work if we need to. Just wait a couple, couple more minutes.
Joe, do you have a day that's gonna be good next week to sign my ours?
I think. Bear with me. Tuesday is a bad day. Pretty much everything else is fine. Any, any day but Tuesday the fifteenth.
Wednesday or Thursday after one o'clock, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep. Sounds good. I'll be available. Just give me a ring.
Appreciate it.
Well, why don't we get started? We've got three, so we can get rolling. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and nobody else showed up so far, just the, the three of us.
I see a total of eight participants and with your three commissioners, Mr. Peck, Mr. Zlowski and yourself.
Perfect. Alrighty, why don't we, um, how do you want to proceed? Keith, do you just want to pick up where we, where we left off last, last time? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea. I have that we've, that we left off on section thirteen on earth excavation, filling and regrading. Is that correct?
That sounds right. What, do you recall?
I have page eighty-eight.
Page eighty-eight, exactly. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. So this is a, this is an abridged section on earth excavation. Mostly, it goes over in the beginning. It talks about those activities that are exempt from a special permit, and those would include those types of activities associated with building permits with activities involving fifty cubic yards or greater or less on any lot without a zoning approval. What we've done is we've tinkered a little bit with the activities on a first person's personal property to, and to allow for and a zoning permit to be issued by the zoning enforcement officer for activities of more than fifty cubic yards and less than a hundred and fifty cubic yards. I believe it was three hundred cubic yards at one point. But that we determined was a large, larger than what is right for a residential neighborhood. You figure that a, a truckload of soil is probably about twenty cubic yards, maybe a little more. And that would institute quite a number of, of trips within a residential neighborhood without the need for a permit. Those over three hundred yards will now require a special permit from the, from the, from the zoning commission, from the planning zoning commission. Other than that, as we go through standards, excuse me, site plan requirements have stayed the same. Standards have stayed the same in regards to how many acres can be opened up at the same time, how, how, how much you can excavate within a property line, those things, hours of operation, and the crushing of materials, they've all returned, stayed the same, as long as, as long as restoration performance bond, the application and the duration of the permit, all those activities, all those sections of the zoning regulations have stayed the same. Okay, I'll just keep on moving on unless I get some questions.
Section. Just real quick, if there's a, if there's blasting.
Yes.
That automatically require then that there be a, that there's a site plan?
That's a separate permit that's issued by the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, so, okay, so we, okay, that's right, gotcha.
We can, we can discuss it as part of a site plan or part of a development. But when it comes down to that, approval would have to come through.
Right.
They're off.
Okay.
As we move into section fourteen, certified soil erosion and sedimentation regulations. These have been pretty much the same. It's a page and a half. They were good in the old regulations and they are good now. And this talks about that if you were to clear more than a half acre of land within the town of Seymour, you would require a certified or certified erosion and sedimentation control plan. And as the, the new, as I, what, I'll, I don't want to say a joke now. Sorry about that. Okay, section fifteen, Business and Office Development District simply is the same that had been for the town of Seymour since it was added to the regulations, no change. These are our overlay zones. Plan Development District or a PDD, it's been used in town. It is similar, it is the same as before. No change has been made. Only changes that you'll see of any in these sections have been made to when the sections have been shifting around and section ten became section nine, you might see some different references as you go back through here and notice any changes at all, but the PDC section is simply the same as it existed before. And I'm just going through section, page ninety-eight, page ninety-nine, all of these are under the PDD and it allows for a greater, a greater, you, a many, a greater number of uses other than the, than the zones that we have for specific developments. Section seventeen is the mixed-use district. That too is the same as before. These are overlay zones that were created by past zoning commissions. And they work well and they can work well in the future if, if one wants to use them. The MDD or the mixed development is something that somebody probably was, will be wanting to use in the near future as it relates to some of the downtown development and the mixed-use development that we're thinking about with the TOD, the transit-oriented development that is in some sort of pipeline now that people are talking about. This would be something that the town might want to use to control different kinds of development and encourage a mixed-use development in that mixed-use development area. And that goes all the way to one oh four. At one oh five, that is our Act for Protection District. We might want to work on this a little further as time goes on citing that actual regulation, but as this point, what the town does, it refers to the statutes. And simply those statutes supplement the regulations that we do not have in this section and allows for the, for the, for site plans and developments and uses to be reviewed through that through that process. We might want to go back and look at that and see if we've, if we want to do, if we want to codify it ourselves. As, as this point, it does exist in our regulations. It's identified as such and, and it doesn't have less, any less weight than any other community that would have an Act for Protection District because ours is mapped. The district exists. The regulations themselves are found in the statutes. And those are really limited to, to what, twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-eight separate prohibited uses. So it's a different kind of land use and a different type of development or regulation. We come to section nineteen for signs. Signs are usually the most hardest part that a zoning officer enforces in town. What we've done is, if you look at the past one, this is an entirely new section. It was adopted from the, it was taken from the Southbury, Connecticut's latest regulations. If you know anything about Southbury, they're very, very, they're very concerned about their signage in town. It's something that the community and their planning and zoning commission is very serious about. These are good ones. They, they are very good in the definitions. They're very, they point out exactly what signs are prohibited. They have a very easy to understand section, section nineteen point four on what signs are permitted. And within the residential district, the commercial district, as you see along, as well as those special permit signs that are a little bit abnormal, a little bit different than the average sign. These spell out very nicely, much different, much better than the original form. So this is all new. It's not much to ask, any questions that are derived by this. It's pretty straightforward, but if anyone has a question on signs, here's where we are now.
Has it always been six square feet for the, for sale or for rent signs?
I believe so. Yeah, two by three. That's not very big. Six square feet is a two foot by three feet.
Yeah. Are there any signs in town that are gonna all of a sudden become out of, out of sync with the regulations and what happens with those?
I believe there probably are a number ones. There probably are some billboards that are there, some, some oversized signage. Those will stay the same. They will immediately become legal non-conformities. And they can be replaced at the same size that they are currently of using the same material, same size, same height. And that would be not only non-conforming in height, in, in size, but also in location to, location to the setbacks and things like that. The only thing I would say is that those signs that are within public rights of ways that, that come down and then want to be rebuilt, I think are gonna have a harder time than the ones that are directly on private property. That, that would be a matter of public safety.
Keith, a sign that's existing that's in violation of the regulations and not permitted though would not fall under that existing non-conforming.
Probably would, but we would encourage them to move it. I mean, if it's something that was an obvious public safety problem, we would encourage somebody during the building project permit or the zoning permit to, to remove it from that.
Yeah.
But you are correct.
Yeah, we have several signs that are probably in violation now, so the violation wouldn't continue.
The ones in violation would stay in violation.
Stay in violation, correct?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, you can't make something legally non-conforming if it's, if it violates the, the rules now. Okay, as we move along, we have parking, off-street parking. These are primarily the same that we had before. Everything, we've never really had a problem with parking. What we have changed with parking is parking on site plans, parking as development. This is really parking as just the, the standards, the sizes, size of driveways, things like that. That has not changed. These have stayed the same and we haven't really tinkered around anything with the particular land uses and those particular sign, excuse me, parking requirements. We've really never had in the three years I've been here and, and Jim might be able to back us up is that parking is always, it, it doesn't seem like there's been issues with parking in town. New, new, new sites normally have enough parking and traditionally these parking regulations have been even more on the strict side. So, and, 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 and requiring much more, or maybe not much more, but requiring more than what's, what's needed on each site. If we come to a point where we, that we need parking as it relates to new developments, we have the parking requirements in the site plan regulations and those have been modified for, for new, for the, for, with new standards. But this, this will suffice. As we go along landscaping, this is a new section altogether. As we, as told before, this is from, this regulation was derived from those model regulations that we had discussed before from the American Planning Association and Town of Washington and the State of Connecticut, which helped out as well just by publication. But the landscaping and screening, these are all new. They in fact specify, if you go back to our special site plan and anything that has to do with landscaping in the older regulations. The, as we remember when we looked at the regulations for the garden center and there was quite a bit of conversation about what types of plants were gonna be used, where they were gonna be placed, what constituted landscaping, all that kind of stuff. This is all really codified in a much more cleaner version. It's much more, it's, it's specific in what's required, where it's required, what kinds of materials are needed and how are they supposed, and how are they used? As we go along, let me just go back and here we go back into, from general requirements about and landscaping trees, irrigation, screening and fencing, talking about utilizing healthy and mature trees that are on the site. These are issued, these are things that had not been discussed. What constitute a front landscaped area? What is a buffer? And what are the parameters for a landscape parking area? And these are things that had been scrubbed, have been talked about in the previous regulations, but not exactly described as such and specified what the nature of each of those would be. As well as street trees. And that's really more for the, street trees are normally associated with subdivision development, which hopefully we'll, we'll get in one day. As we move along, section twenty-two, we start getting into the administration. Who is, this tells about who, who, what, what signatures are needed for building permits? What happens with the CEO, a certificate of occupancy? What the commission is allowed to adopt forms, all just the, the wherewithals and the, the surrounding requirements of what it means. What we have added is twenty-two point four, very necessary these days. It talks about when a commission determines that it, what needs to consult with experts and, and, and working on a peer review. This sets forth how it will be paid and and, and, and how it's gonna, what's, what's it subject to? Okay, as we go along, section twenty-three is enforcement. This is, sets forth a method for the enforcement of the zoning regulations of which the zoning officer follows through with, upon finding a violation, issuing a cease and desist order and issuing penalties. Currently, we are working with the town, with Rory and Jim Baldwin and myself and Savannah and Nicole have been working on a new ordinance two thousand and one defining mechanism that actually allows for this to occur or vice versa. They go hand in hand and we want to get that up to date to current statutory language that had not been done since it was written. So the statutes have changed since two thousand and one. We need to do that. That will not change how these regulations are, are done.
Question.
Yes.
Talk about the, the Planning and Zoning Commission itself can be, we can appoint ourselves as.
Yes, as the.
Enforcement officer.
Yes.
Tell me how, how that would work. I mean, obviously it wouldn't be, it would not be commissioners individually, I would assume, right? It would.
It would be, it would be, it would be, you would act as the generator of the cease and desist letter. It would not be individual. It would be the commission as a whole. And I think that would be, you really would be a fallback because you really would want that officer in place.
Right.
If your officer had left, if somebody had retired, you could function as that officer until the, until you hired or appointed a new officer. I think it doesn't allow for the enforcement arm to be, to, to drop if, if you don't have an officer yourselves.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize that the, the commissioners themselves can't really even go up to somebody and say, oh, that's an illegal sign. We have, no, we have to avoid doing that.
Exactly. Okay, as we go along, we're, we're now on page one twenty-two and the zoning board of appeals. That is essentially the same as before. This is just the types of, of where they function in. How do they function within the zoning regulations? Within, what are their roles? Their role is to hear appeals of orders that Mike has given them. They're here to determine whether an application is with harmony, although we'll keep that in their site plan. Require, their site plan participation has been, has been, they don't have that anymore. Their site plan participation was in earth excavations. And not earth excavations, it was in car, no, wait, what is that, Jim?
A special permit for mining operations.
Yes.
Renewals.
Yes.
Now, we're gonna be looking to move that to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, that we've already done that and that's in the, that's in the table of uses. We've taken them out of that, of the use. We've done that. I'm gonna make a note. So that's more, it's, I'll check on that, but yes, we have done that and we'll do that. Yeah. The Board of Appeals, yes. Was the, oversaw a site, a special permit for mining. That, that responsibility has been given to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that would be, that would be under C as, as right here, to hear and decide applications on site plan and special permits per section eight. They've been removed from that section eight. The standards here, what we have added is that the applicant, along with what we added for the, what you'll see for the zone change, for a special permit, we've added the, the, the requirement that a sign be posted. That was not, we, we lacked that in every aspect of our public hearing process in the, in the, in the last regulations. Now that's been enforced in all of the, all of the sections that require public hearings. One will now have to post a sign on the property of which the activity is taking place to notify those who haven't read the public ad, who haven't heard the town crier and drove past the site or live near the site and would like to comment. As we move along, amendments, amendments is, are, this is amendments to the regulations. What is the procedure for, for amending or having amended regulations? One of the section that we've added, very, very important is section twenty-five point three point two. We have never asked an applicant to submit this style plan. This is straight from the state statutes in order to allow for a petition to be generated and a public hearing to be generated out of that. And that, that's, excuse me, in order to generate the need for a super majority. And this, this language is taken right from the state statutes and it, it requires the applicant to, to put together an assessor's map and draw a perimeter of, of the, of five hundred feet from the property boundaries so that they can send out certified letters to each of those properties and to get the, the possibility of having that super majority, or at least this is, this is the statutory requirement that if you want a zone change, this is what you have to do. What happens is, the, it's interesting is the, the, if twenty percent What happens is I the, it's interesting is the the if twenty percent of. Property owned by people. It's not twenty percent of the landowners, it's twenty percent, it's twenty percent owned by people. So it's an interesting term because if you learn, if you own more around the area, you have more of a say there. It's a real direct uh interaction with those who are going to be affected by the change in zone. Uh that's uh page twenty-five. Um again, on page twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-five point eight. We've added the uh the two sections uh that talk about the sign. Which says that um you know about the sign of of and you also have to do a sign. Uh but twenty-five point nine talks about what we had just said, that if a protest is filed at such hearing. Uh signed by owners of twenty-five percent of the land. Uh within the five hundred feet, such change can only be adopted by a vote of two-thirds. So it doesn't, it doesn't negate their uh their wish to have a zone change. It sets a higher standard because there's a higher set of scrutiny. So that's something that we never had before. And we came upon that when we had a zone change up on North Street, I believe, who I said. Uh section twenty-six is uh if any of the section uh seems to be uh not so good. Again, it doesn't make everything bad. Lawyer talk, right, Joe?
Right.
Uh section seven, we're coming down the end, it's great. Section uh uh twenty-seven, the last one is the effective date. Uh we will have to do that and remember, um we won't, we won't want to do it and then have to do it in the next. We're forgetting about it, but we'll have to do it in the effective date and we'll go from there. Um I just want to say is that we do have. There are some things in here that may may or may not be affected by the new sets of legend, the new zoning legislation. We're gonna do that. Um we're gonna look over that, we're gonna look over this one more time. We have Savannah Nicole for another set of eyes. Um and uh we're gonna go through this one more time. We're gonna give you and by the next meeting. Uh we'll give you a um a new set, uh all cleaned up. Uh we'll try to even point out as best as we can those changes that the commission has asked for. Uh we've done that and uh we'll go through, we'll we'll uh. Um we'll go there. Uh one of the things we might want to do is either set up. It will will, we can't do anything now because this is just the workshop. Um I think, Jim, we're gonna have to, if we want to do a public hearing or we want to do something. Um set additional workshop, we probably should talk about it during the regular meeting at the time where it says approval of. For that, or we can do now, what what's your, what's your pleasure, Jim?
Well, we we could, we could do the um uh you know, a general discussion of of the uh workshop here.
There, Keith, can you go back to twenty-five nine for a minute, please?
Yes, I certainly will. Yeah, okay.
The the last sentence is confusing to me. Such change can only be adopted except by.
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit? It sounds contrary to the way something would be.
They'll still wind up scratching out the word except.
Okay, adopted, okay. I take it right from the from the lawyer's mouth. Yeah, adopted by a vote. No other vote.
Thank you, sir.
If I could uh just go back for a minute, Keith, back to twenty twenty-two four.
Sure, yeah.
The peer review stuff, could you give us a quick example of? What type of application that might occur with what kind of of uh? Expert we would want to get and how, just run through how.
How's this? Suppose you, we had a development that had a uh got a wetland permit. Or was working in a water course, for some reason got an earth and dam approved. We would want uh an earth and dam structural engineer to look at it. Brian Nesteriak is not one. Or one that, say, we had a subdivision that had a fifty-foot stone. Dirt wall, retaining wall. So we would want it, Brian is not a structural engineer. It's mostly with technical issues, uh things like that. May, we may get one that has a um a odd septic system. Or a community sector system. We might want to get some sort of um specialist to do that. Somebody's beyond our expertise of that would be found in the office. And if we found something like that, we would want a a peer review of that kind of system.
Would you be surprised if if a a developer would look at that and go, hey, you can use this as a weapon?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I I think it is.
It's voted by the commission. It's determined by the commission. The commission votes on it and determines that we do not have the expertise. Savannah, Nicole?
I I I don't want to misspeak, but one of the recent public acts in the twenty-twenty-one legislative session. Strengthen this power for municipalities. So Chairman Seal, I agree. It could be used as a weapon, but ultimately, if you're providing an application before a commission, they don't. I don't want to say trust, but you have questions about what's going on, you have the right to be able to have an expert that. Can agree with or show the deficiencies between the the report they're presenting.
Yeah, I I can see how it's extremely important for us. I can also see how a developer may say, well, wait a second. You can just tell us we need X, well, you know, that may well, and it may come to pass that we that uh. We want some expert that maybe somebody can convince can convince us we don't need, but.
Okay, I think on a, something that's gonna, that's has arisen in the past where where a good example of this. Is for for any type of telecommunications or any type of uh uh things like that where. Outside of staff is or a professional engineer that you might need an expert to come in, especially if an applicant's giving testimony. In that particular area, the commission can go to their own expert and say, okay, well, our expert says this. And that's where it would land. So it could be something uh with environmental, uh this all in new telecommunications. Uh solar uh that you're gonna be dealing with. Um many communities are getting these big solar arrays. And you know, there there are some impacts there. And again, they would just be outside of what, you know, we would Brian would handle or something like that.
Okay, good.
Chairman, it's section two, um subsection B of P A number twenty-one, twenty-nine.
Twenty-one point twenty-nine?
Twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Yep, I can, I can send you the email, I I could PDF if that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate it, thanks. Alrighty, any uh? Where are we, Keith, are we?
We ended, yeah.
Lawyers look at this.
So we're pretty good. Okay, so so uh for the commission members. It looks like if everything stays pretty uh good with the with the COVID status. We might be able to return. I think it's very important that when you bring this to public hearing, that we do it in a in a format where people are. We're not zooming. So having said that, the original goal um. Uh was set that by the end of twenty-twenty-one, we would have. You know, we'd be fully underway, which we have been, and that we finish up with commissions and we're. You've you've actually brought this right on our timeframe, which is great. We've told the administration that we were probably looking to bring this public hearing in April, two more months. Um so like Keith said, if if Keith, you'll have a clean copy um with the changes. That'll give one more month or one more go around for the commission members. Uh it'd be nice, uh Joe, uh we'll reach out through the staff, but. We get, it's imperative that all the members. You you don't want to make sure that everybody's up to speed, um the voting members when we go for adoption. All the members, actually. Um but I mean, if if the commission would consider maybe that April mark. And again, if all things go well, it probably in person. Um I know there are some residents that have been in um speaking with Keith and Savannah. Um on some changes, so we are gonna get some public comment on this. But uh you know, and then we want to be able to prep up uh the administration as well, so that they're they're well aware of it. And then if we can get through that in April, even if there's a continuation. We could maybe hit the June, July uh adoption mark, which would be, which would be fantastic.
When when do the lawyers look at this? After you guys do the next draft?
The this will probably, we're going to, soon as Keith cleans this up. We're we're gonna put it in their hands and your next workshop that we would have. Or your next meeting, we will have counsel here. Um you know, paying them the big bucks for anything that they may find that needs adjustment. Or anything that you as commissioners would want to ask um our counsel. So hopefully um. Uh I'll speak to Keith uh this week and we'll go over that. Um we have to, we're not sure, I don't know if Barbara's gonna take this or uh another town council. I'll have to discuss this with uh. With uh Anne Murray, the first selectman, where this is gonna get assigned. So um. I think, do you think that's okay? Uh anybody have any comment on that? Bring in counsel next meeting? Does anybody want to go longer than that and wait?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. All right, you know, Jim.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is that we have um. Um we do have some big plans that we will be reviewing in the next two meetings as well, but. This does seem like a very important thing that we have to get on board, get this going at the next meeting.
Well, I'm I'm pretty sure, Keith, soon as we dump this on council's lap, they're gonna be, you know, like law attorneys do. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, you look at it at two o'clock when your meeting's at three?
One forty-five.
Oh, one forty-five, yeah. So.
Very good.
So yeah, if we can get it, the sooner we can get it in their hands, but we didn't want to put it in their hands before you took, your your commission has completely. Heard it, vetted it, had a chance to question it, and then uh. Before we get counsel coming back with anything on it. So it looks like we're at that point, but I'll 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 move that along and and probably put it on for next month.
Yeah, I think it looks pretty, I think it all looks pretty, pretty good.
Very good.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, Keith and Savannah have done incredible work on this. Um you know, they did quite something and the towns are definitely reaping the benefits of their hard work.
Yeah, for sure. All right, we uh if there's any, nothing else, should we uh break for fifteen minutes and come back, or how do we want to? Unless there's anything more to discuss on this?
Joe, I'll leave the link up, um but I'll discontinue the recording until we resume it uh just before seven o'clock.
Good, okay, we'll see you all then.
You bet. Take care.
There we go.
Now you are.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get started then with the the regular meeting. We've already. On our pledge allegiance, we have no alternates to seat. Moving on to number four, do we have any any uh any correspondence?
I have no correspondence.
All right, then let's go to number number five, CEO's report, Mike.
Um I'll just keep it very brief and simple. We have a remediation that's been completed on um the. Garage on South Main Street that went to um a variance request. Um the garage, the front of the garage has been remediated. Um we're working on other um other enforcement is- issues. Erosion control issues. Um and we're quite busy, so. I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions? All right, in that case, let's move to number six, public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to make any comment? Anyone from the public? Or in that case, let's move to number seven, approving the uh regulations workshop. Minutes from last meeting. Anybody have any changes, corrections, comments? I have a one minor one on uh. Uh let's see, the second paragraph where I asked if the new regs are more or less specific than other towns. I I think what I probably said at that point was restrictive. Certainly, that was what I was wondering about, you know, um not necessarily specific. So I think we need to change. Does that make sense? And that was the point at which Brian had had responded, that he thought that our regs are on the high end of average restrictiveness. You know, restrictive being a good thing from our perspective, but I want to be cautious and concerned about. Being over restrictive because people have the right to develop their property, so that was a, that was the intent. So I think that was probably, if we just change that we're specific to restrictive, that reflects exactly what I was getting at.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Anybody else have any uh? Questions, amendments, changes on the those minutes? In that case, we can entertain a motion to uh to approve them.
Move that we approve as amended.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Abstention.
So carried. Sorry, somebody say something?
Rob Van Agen abstention.
Right. No problem, certainly. All right, let's move on then to eight, the approval of the regular meeting minutes, January thirteen. Anybody have any? Changes, corrections, comments to those? Not we can entertain a motion to approve those as well.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so carried. All right, let's move on to number nine, the eight twenty-four referral at one fifteen Derby Avenue.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. You received a memorandum in your packet. There is a current eight twenty-four referral for the property at one fifteen Derby Avenue. And so as you are aware, um a municipal agency shall acquire la- shall not acquire land. Until the proposal to take such action has been referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report. So after our lady who step has reviewed the parcel in question. Our recommendation would be that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. However, we would encourage that the recommendation sent forth. Verbalizes the concern that there has to be a way to establish a release from any liability from individuals entering the site. Um because for those of you who may not be aware, this is a cemetery, and so we still want people to be able to to visit their their. Departed loved ones, but um we wouldn't want that to be a cause of concern for liability purposes.
Question, is this um, is this normally what happens? I mean, I've never. I've never encountered a referral like this. We're we're looking to purchase the land the cemetery is on?
We're gonna acquire it, so I think someone's giving it. Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I I think, so the cemetery that's along Derby Avenue, one of the older cemeteries in town. The town was approached by um some of the uh members of the cemetery committee. And I guess they no longer have the ability um to maintain the cemetery. Although there are some uh burial plots um still available in that cemetery. Um which again, like Savannah and Nicole said, it's very important that uh that the town find a way through council. To release the liability to anyone that enters there for any reason. But uh the the town in the past has taken over, we own, we we have and care for one on Roosevelt Drive. Um again, these are very old cemeteries and then uh the I believe that there's that the uh. Basically, the town becomes the. The the entity that's responsible when when these things are abandoned. Again, I believe it's been vetted through council, that's how it got it got to us. But. That's kind of the story with it.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
It should be noted that they do have funds that they're going to be transferring to the town. You know, they're whatever treasury they had towards the maintenance. And we did. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, this had come up and it was something where. We tried to kind of shop it out to see if there were any other maintenance companies that would be interested in taking it over. And again, because it's such a small plot with only a couple spots left, there were no takers, so. That's why it got passed down.
Yeah, and I do, I do believe there is a, the town's entering into an agreement. On this, and I don't believe Keith or Savannah, you have any. Information, but I believe that the town had entered into an agreement with a. A company, basically a company that does the burials. And that would be that only individual company. Rob, you might know more about that if you were.
Yeah, that's pretty much exactly it, there, there is somebody lined up. If somebody were interested in purchasing, that connection's already been made, who would oversee that?
So it looks like the town, you know, would be picking up the maintenance, so it doesn't fall into disrepair and become a. A problem for the residents of Seymour.
Okay, makes sense. Anybody else have any other? Questions?
Mr. Beck? So. If we're maintaining it and there's lots available. However few they are. Are we saying that the sale of the lot will not result in revenue to the town? It's going to go to somebody else?
No, I I believe the revenue goes to the town. That that goes to the town, it would be up to this other company, however, to provide the services that would be need for the. For that particular site, but you know, the it's it's not like the Public Works would be doing any. You know, if you will, grave digging or anything like that, this is the responsibility of someone else that the town would be in. Rely on, so I believe it's just maintenance of cutting grass and just general maintenance.
Any other questions, any commissioners? I mean, it's it make, seems. Fine to me, I think in terms of the liability issue, I mean, count, council would have probably have a comment on that, there's, you know, I I don't know that there's a way we can prevent liability other than. I mean, council will take care of that, but you know, generally as a sovereign, you can only be sued where you're allowed to be sued, and I'm not sure what the state. Statutes are with respect to this type of thing, but seems reasonable to me just to make a positive referral. With that stipulation, that's counselor, somebody look into. Liability issues. So if no, unless there's any other further discussion, we can, we can have a motion to do that. At this point.
We'll make a motion.
Do we have a a second?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we need to know what the motion is, can't just say make a motion.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to make a, were we doing a favorable?
Yeah, what I said, it's a favorable reference with recommendation to council look into. Liability issues.
So moved.
Now, do we have?
Second motion?
Sorry? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
So referred. All right, let's move on to. Number ten, twelve and fourteen, William Lane.
So Commissioner, my name is Tim Sadek, I live at twelve William Lane. Basically, what I'm proposing tonight is a lot line revision between myself at number twelve, which is lot five. And my neighbor, which is number fourteen, lot four. We're going to do a lot line revision and that basically that's what I propose to you guys, both lots are still compliant. With the. The revision of the property lines. That's it.
Chairman Zeal. You have a report, hopefully you have a report in your, in your packet concerning that. Along with the response from Mr. Sadek. It may not be in there, but the question was to him regards to the conservation easements. That are located on the property as well as the drainage easements to the dedicated to the town. It was just asked of him that when this is done, that he would need to. Assure the town that the conservation easements have remained viable. With what they were supposed to do. They although they are changing in shapes and sizes, as well as the drainage easement. And Mr. Sadek sent a letter back to this office stating that these would remain viable and would remain the same. My suggestion would be that if you were to. Approve this lot line modification. We would just like to see those deeds beforehand, they do not need to be sent to an attorney. They do not need to be sent to the town, back to the commission for approval, but we would like this, this, the commission to advise the applicant to. Refer those new deeds back to the land use office, so we could assure this commission that. That those issues remain the same, those easements remain viable and remain on the record.
Yeah, well, they they would run with the land, they should be written easements.
Yes.
I don't think that, and we, I don't even think we would need any kind of a. Assurance, I don't even show what an assurance would be, but if if they're on the deeds and they will run with the land, so they should be fine, but I I would, I would expect you'd need to see them. First, so I don't know if we make a conditional approval pending approval, you know, and approval pending our receipt of the deeds that show.
Yes, that's what we were looking for, and not necessarily going back to the commission for approval, but just receipt from the land, to the land use office.
Right, and then it could be.
So we can assure that.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody else have any other questions or? Keith, is there anything else from staff that we should know about?
Nope.
Really simple to me.
Very straightforward, was the subdivision will remain, all lots will remain viable and adhere to the zoning regulations.
Okay. All right, well, entertain a motion then, somebody would like to articulate that. It would be a motion to approve it subject to our receipt of the. The deeds.
Ball move that we approved the lot line adjustments for twelve and fourteen, William Lane contingent upon receipt of the deeds.
I think, right, Jim, right, anybody, I think that's fine. All right, do we have a second?
A second that one.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? None, so approved. All right, let's go on to number eleven. This is seven forty-six, seven fifty. Derby Ave.
Right, here for the applicant is Jesse Judson, Licensed Land Surveyor, fifty-two Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut. Presented the site plans last month. After that, again, January, we did receive approval from the Town Wetlands Commission. They approved, the town engineer had reviewed the drainage and everything and that was acceptable. The Wetlands Commission approved it with one condition, and that was just that some debris in the back near the water course be cleaned up. So we have that approval, so you know, we're here tonight, hopefully seeking site plan approval. If the commission wants, I could, I could go through it again if if they need a refreshment, but if they recall, then I, and I won't waste your time.
Anybody, I I line with me, does anybody, any other commissioners have any other questions? I I saw the the notes. From Brian. He has no concerns. Jim or or Keith?
Um, I do not have any concerns now that the town engineer has. Has okayed this as well. I had some concerns about traffic and the and a state road, but I've been assured by by Jesse that. It is not sixty-seven, of course, and it is not Route Eight as well, Derby Avenue at this point is a town road, so I was mistaken on that. But it has received its approvals. And as well as a certificate of allocation from the zoning board of feels. And we've reviewed the, staff has reviewed the site plan and find it, it does adhere to the regulations and. It could be approved without any conditions.
Okay, so we're just approving the site plan tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that site plan then for. That address.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for seven forty-six, seven fifty Derby Ave.
And we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so approved. Thanks, Jesse.
You too.
Where are we? Okay, number. Number twelve, three thirty-six Roosevelt Avenue.
Yes, good evening, for the record, my name is Emily Jones, professional engineer with Double One Engineering in Woodbury. I also have Susan Odell on the line, who's the architect with Paul Bailey Architect out of New Haven. Mike, is there any way for me to share my screen? I have a little. PowerPoint. If it's possible.
I think you should be all set up.
Okay, yep, I see it. Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, um, we're here tonight representing five eighty-nine Investments LLC for proposed development at three thirty-six Roosevelt Drive. This is a map of the existing conditions along with a photo of the site, it's about three point seven five acres. The site's located in the RC three zone on the northeast side of Roosevelt Drive. I'm sure you're familiar with the road, but it's right across from the old Don't Throw Restaurant. It's surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial uses with some additional open space upgrading to the east. As you can see from the photo, it's mainly open space, there has been previous clearing. And earthwork on the site, past work on it, it slopes sort of towards the roadway. And we did go through Wetland Commission for. Approval of some regulated activity associated with a small wetland pocket in the northeast portion of the site, which you can see. Oh. On the screen here. In Roosevelt Drive, there's an existing water service, but there's no sanitary sewer. And the roadway in front is also Route thirty-four, State Route thirty-four, so we're in the process of going through approval with DOT. What the applicant is proposing and what we're here asking for your approval on. Is a three-story residential apartment building with a footprint of about twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And thirty-four dwelling units with a total of fifty bedrooms. So the property, as you can see, will be accessed from Roosevelt Drive. Be served by a new driveway entrance and parking in the front and rear of the building, which is level all the way around, there's access all the way around it. Handicapped parking in the front and rear. And the site, you know, has been designed to conform to zoning regulations, it's a permitted use in this zone by special permit. So I believe after tonight, we'll have to, you know, set a public hearing. So I'm not gonna, you know, I can go into great amount of detail, but you'll have to hear it all again at the, at the public hearing, so I'm just gonna give you sort of an overview tonight. We have designed. A detailed storm drainage system, the site will be served by an onsite septic system, which has been reviewed and approved by the local and state health department. It'll be served by public water with both domestic and water, fire service there. Landscape and lighting has been approved, reviewed and included in the plan set. And. During, you know, Brian, this year I had comments throughout the Wetland Commission process, I'm sure I'll have additional comments as it pertains to planning and zoning. There are some drainage upgrades proposed in Route thirty-four. And I also have the architect here online, you can go into a little bit of detail. On the architecture for you if you'd like, and just give you a brief rundown of that, and then we could set a public hearing as the commission wishes. So. Susan, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, my name is Susan Odell, I'm an architect with Paul Bailey Architect in New Haven, Connecticut, the address is one ten Audubon Street. We have here a three-story apartment building, it's an elevator building, as Emily said, thirty-two units, the mix is eighteen one bedrooms and sixteen two bedrooms. It's about twelve thousand five hundred square feet per floor with just under a five thousand square foot basement for a total of about forty-two thousand square feet. The first floor has common areas that include a lobby, a community room, an exercise room and a mailroom. The basement is for storage, it has dedicated bike storage and also general storage for tenants. The upper two floors are. Units and common areas for circulation. Materials, we have asphalt shingle roof, and you can see the sloped roof, what's hiding in behind that are the mechanicals in a flat roof area. And then the siding is vinyl siding, both at a primarily clamber with shingle accent. It's composite trim, vinyl windows, there's a standing seam metal roof on the entry portico there that you can see. And I think that covers it, Emily.
Thanks, Susan. So I think that's, you know, the general overview, understand a special permit will need a public hearing, so I'm happy to answer any questions the commission members have. And others than that. I guess that's it for tonight.
Okay, great, that I, sounds good, does any commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about, has a traffic impact assessment been done, you've got one eighty-eight coming out nearby there, you've got. What will be a diner, I believe, at Stone's Row, you've got Dunkin' Donuts, you've got thirty-four, what kind of traffic impact are we going to have here, any thoughts?
So we haven't conducted a traffic study of this site. We have conducted a sightline analysis for the site, you know, this area of the road is. Long and straight and flat. We haven't been asked to do that by the DOT either. This use itself wouldn't be considered a major traffic generator. But, you know, I'll take the commission's input on that, of course.
Any other questions? Staff, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, we'd like to suggest that the public hearing be scheduled for March tenth. At the next regularly scheduled meeting. And we would suggest, or we would really. Like to ask our our applicant to produce a list of exhibits. That have been given to the town so far.
Okay.
So we can all be on the same page on what you've, you've presented to us and. And so we, as a town, can figure out if there are any other documents or any other things that we need from you, from that. It just gets us all on the same page.
Sounds good, okay.
Okay, very good, in that case, we'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the project of three thirty-six Roosevelt Drive. Anybody like to make that motion?
And that would be at at seven o'clock, is that right?
There's, they are at seven, seven o'clock, is that right? Yes, it is.
Yes.
Seven, yeah. Anybody want to make that motion, or should we just take?
I'll make a motion. To set a public hearing for three thirty-six Roosevelt Drive on March tenth.
I'll second.
I can, Rob.
At seven, at seven o'clock, seven PM?
PM.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, we will see you next month. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to number thirteen, ones at one oh nine River Street.
I am. Chairman, Chairman Zeal. Oh. Oh, let me just get some some stuff out of the record here. Excuse me, sorry there. Chairman Zeal, this is an application that is first coming to us, so you'll need to either. You'll need to accept the application. And if you choose, this is will be site plan approval process. And if you choose the app, the the commission has a choice of either setting a public hearing for this. Or not setting a public hearing of this based on the intensity of the use, et cetera, as using. Benchmarks that you've used before for for commercial projects, so. Just wanted to state that for the commission.
Wetlands has has not approved yet, correct?
And Wetlands has not approved this. Yeah, it's certainly, it's before that, so.
What's the status of the site right now in terms? Was there some cleanup that was happening at that, at that site?
Yes, there.
My name is Stephen Valentine. I'm one of the applicants. I live in Celebration, Florida. The site is currently going through a remediation and is being entered into a state monitoring program. Everything's going to be cleaned up down to the bedrock. And then water quality is going to be monitored by the state independently, and then the state will approve. And release the site approximately a year that it has totally been cleaned up. And soil, the old foundations that had some machine oil have been removed and are being removed. Soil is being removed and clean suitable soil will be brought back into the property.
Is this premature? Am I missing something, or is this way premature for this app, for this application?
I don't think so. I mean, the 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 property does not have to go into a state program. It's that minor, but we've elected. To put it in the program. Out of, out of our sole choice, so that the site can start to be developed when the ground is unfrozen.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant. I I believe the the site is being remediated by the current owner. That work has been going on for some time. As stated. You know, I I I'm not sure where they are with that, you know, where it relates. The application certainly could be, can be heard and listened to. But I'm just not sure of the actual state, maybe this, I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name already. Was it Steven?
Yes.
Yes, do you have, do you have any, do you have any, just, do you have, your company or you're, you're, you're not doing the remediation, right? It's by the, by the owner of the property?
Yes, it's by the owner and the same engineering company that has designed the site. Their environmental group is overseeing the cleanup. We are going far above and beyond, because I would like an institutional quality asset. Meaning that we have no brown field or other issues. We, we literally don't have to go through the extent that we are going through, but I did offer some additional funding to the seller. Because I would just like, I'd like the site as clean as humanly possible.
Okay, great.
We're going way above, we're we're going way above and beyond what has to be done, because I think it's the right thing to do.
Great, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that that answers a question that that we did not know prior. From the, I get the present owner, they had not communicated that to anyone. I don't believe in the land use department, but thank you, sir.
From some, so Jim and Keith, from our perspective, there's no reason why we can't accept the application.
That's correct, yes.
And and commissioners, anybody have any other, any other questions? If not, I guess we can simply at this point vote to accept the application unless there's any further discussion required. All right, in that case, let's hear a motion.
Make a motion to accept the application at one oh nine River Street.
For site, site plan approval. All right, we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? So carried, we're all set.
Is there any discussion, is there gonna be any presentation prior to? Tonight, or is there going to be, is that gonna be done at a later date?
You're asking the applicant, right?
I'm George Andrews, LaRaro Engineering. I'm here, available and have a presentation if you'd like it this evening. Or if, depending on what your your plans are with the application, I could certainly give it at the next meeting. If it would be more suitable at that time.
I don't have a preference. Jim or 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 Keith, do you have a preference?
Well, I would suggest, as we're moving along with this and we're talking about this, we should determine. And maybe you'd like to put out to a discussion for the commissioners to determine due to the impending. Nature of the application. The what, what, what things may or may not be needed. I think you want to set a public hearing for this. For this application, you're, I think you have done that in the past for projects of this nature. And because it is still at the wetlands commission for their review and possible decision. Our recommendation is to utilize the full sixty-five days that are allowed. And set a public hearing for April fourteenth. Then, then we can cease discussion. We can have every, all discussion could be done on the record during the public hearing.
Yeah, that makes, that makes perfect sense. All right, well, then we'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for April. What was the day? April?
April fourteenth. That gives us.
Would it be part?
Excuse me?
Would it be possible to get on the March agenda?
No, because we'd like to have a full report from the wetlands ahead of time. That's my opinion. It's up to the, it would be, I'm just giving my opinion. It would be up to the commission to to respond to you on.
I would agree with Keith as well. So where the the wetlands just just heard this when? Last month, I think it was, was it?
Yeah.
We can do it before April. So do we have a motion to put this on for a public hearing for April fourteenth at seven PM?
I move that one oh nine River Street be held for public hearing on April fourteenth at seven PM.
And we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Hi. All right, so carried. So we're on for April fourteen, seven PM, public hearing. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comments? Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I see no public comment in the chat.
All righty. In that case, the new move to number fifteen.
Before you do that, I will not be in attendance for the March P and Z meeting.
Okay. You have something more interesting to do?
Yes, I do, actually. I will be, I will be out of state attending a board of directors meeting.
Imagine that, okay. All righty, so how about a motion for item number fifteen?
Make my motion for adjournment.
A second? All in favor? I. Definitely not. All right, we are done. Thank you. We'll see you all next, see you all next month.
Thank you. See you next month.
Bye, everybody.